Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Wake County Virtual Candidate Forum for the Board of Education. The League is proud to support voter education and to continue our long history of hosting candidate forums. The Wake County Board of Education is a local governing body of the Wake County Public School System. It is the largest school district in North Carolina and the 15th largest in the United States. It serves a very diverse student body and has improved its graduation rate so that almost 90% graduate from high school. Its nine members are currently elected from separate county districts. Each member represents the district within the entire board and is elected by residents of that district. All candidates are nonpartisan, meaning they are not running as representatives of a political party. The school board sets policy for the school system implemented by the superintendent and administrative staff. The board also adopts an annual budget proposal that includes its request for local funding from the Wake County Board of Commissioners as well as its plan for using state and federal funds. The school board does not have taxing authority. Today, we welcome candidates for District Nine, Karen Carter, Bill Fletcher, and Daniel Matting. District Nine is in the western part of Wake County and covers most of Cary. All candidates live in District Nine. Welcome, Karen, Bill, and Daniel. Thank you for joining us today. We will ask every candidate for the Board of Education the same questions. The questions will cover a range of issues relevant to the scope of the board. I'd like to verify with all of you that none of you have received these questions in advance.
Oh.
Okay, thank you. All right. You may now have two minutes for an introductory statement. Karen, you may start.
Okay. Well, hi, I am Karen Carter. I have a son who just graduated from Green Hope and my daughter Sarah is a junior at Green Hope. And I'm actually a product of the Wake County Public School System. And from there, I went on to Meredith College and earned a social work degree and then became a therapeutic foster care social worker. It was there I worked relentlessly with the best interests of those children first in multiple systems. That included the court, education, mental health, foster care, and birth family systems. I also worked with those children to help them become self advocates. Then I had my son and decided to not work outside of the home for a while. And now fast forward a little while, and I just started my ninth year at Davis Drive Middle School as a special education IA. And for over a decade, I have been a consistent community advocate for a wide range of issues and concerns such as an ICE facility, multiple reassignment attempts for our neighborhood, bell schedule changes, curriculum, and transparency issues. As a board representative, I look to listen to all parents, students, staff, and community members through respectful and open dialogue. I also am looking to ensure equal educational opportunities for every student, a sound education, and supports that they may need to help them rise academically.
Thank you. Thank you. Two minutes. Okay, Bill? I can't hear you, you're muted.
Occupational hazard nowadays.
Yeah.
I appreciate the League hosting this forum, albeit very unusual in format, so thank you very much. I too am a graduate of the Wake County, well, the Raleigh City Public School System many, many years ago, was here when the merger, when we first integrated the schools and have enjoyed the fact that we have merged district, which is a very wise decision that was done in 1975 and has benefited our community tremendously. I have been on the board for some time. I was a part of establishing the series of goals around Goal 2020, the primary one of which was that we would have 95%, our goal was to have 95% of our students graduate in a four-year cohort. This year, update the earlier comments that you made, Ms. Loehn, the, we reached just over 90% of all of our students graduating in a four-year cohort. We've still got a lot of work to do and we continue to do that. One of the reasons I want to continue to serve our community is to expand on that success that we've had with students and to recognize that it doesn't start at high school. It starts down in kindergarten or preschool. And it starts in terms of how do we help our young people feel comfortable in our schools, engage in instruction and learning? And the ultimate objective of all of this is that we have a high-quality school in close proximity to every home in Wake County.
Thank you. Daniel Matting?
Yes, my name is Daniel Matting. I have two sons in middle school. So far, we've been really happy with Wake County Public Schools. When we started elementary school, our school was a Title I school, which means that over 40% of the kids at the school were economically disadvantaged. In North Carolina, to get free and reduced lunch, a family of four has to make less than $33,500. For reduced lunch, a family of four has to make less than $47,600. My wife and I, when we started the school, she went for two years and helped in the classroom when she could on Tuesdays and Thursdays. I helped in first grade tutor and I really enjoyed it. I started in PTA, the grounds committee, because the grounds was a mess. I got family members to come out and help clean up the grounds. I also helped with running club whenever I could. So we had a wonderful experience with our elementary school, and I know economically diverse schools can work. So my campaign has several focuses, and one of which is equal education for all students. The Wake County average for free and reduced lunch is about 32%, about one in three students. And I think we need to distribute that amongst all the schools. So one school here isn't 7% and some other school over here is 86%. To do that, I want to encourage the existing board members to rethink how we pay principals. So the state gives us about 75% of the money for principals, and we're pretty much locked into how we distribute that money. That money is largely distributed based on test scores and the population, the number of students in the school. I think we should redirect the county supplement to principals to, rather than being based on large school sizes, I think that we should encourage our good principals that want to get raises, that want to try hard, to go to more challenging schools. By more challenging, I mean schools with more economically disadvantaged kids. Additionally, I think that the strategic plan puts out really good objectives, particularly from an academic perspective. Two objectives that I think we're missing are foreign languages and personal findings. So our business leaders, when they were surveyed in our strategic plan, said we need kids to speak at least one second language. We in Wake County Public Schools, we wait till high school to teach kids one language. And it's pretty well-known and everywhere else that kids need to learn foreign languages in elementary school.
Thank you, Daniel. So I'm going to move on to the question portion of the forum. This is the first question. Beyond the technology funding that the CARES Act has already provided, what policies, procedures, and strategies would you implement to improve equity across students, to close the achievement gaps that have harmful effects on children of color, economically disadvantaged students, students with disability, disabilities, and English language learners? Daniel, you may go first.
Well, I'd like to start with preschool programs. And I think if you're coming into kindergarten and your parents haven't taught you your letters and their sounds, you're going to be at a horrible disadvantage. And I know that because I'm actually dyslexic. So in first and second grade, I wasn't reading at a grade level. So I do think that we need to focus preschool efforts on those kids that are maybe not getting a lot of English or a lot of help in reading. I think I've already spoke about my interest in adjusting principal pay to be based on the number of socio-economic disadvantaged kids rather than just a larger school. And let's, I don't know how much time, how much time do I have?
You had two minutes.
Oh, I apologize. Okay.
That's okay.
So again, I think that the county has done districting well. I think it's an honorable goal that we need to try to hit a benchmark of 32% in every school. I recognize that that's not always going to be possible. I don't want to bus kids for a half hour to a different school district. But I think with my GIS background, I can help the school board better district to still have shorter drives but to achieve that goal of more balanced schools. I think when it comes to disparities between the rich and the poor, I think that is going to get worse. So 2008 economic crisis absolutely hit the lower-income families worse. And I think that's only a small taste in what we're about to have with the COVID economy that we're in. I think the essential workers in Wake County are going to be greatly impacted in the next even two years by this weak economy that we're heading into. So I think, again, our schools need to make sure that everyone, not just the rich, not just the white, that everyone gets an equal education. And that's going to be a top priority.
Thank you. Bill, would you like to go next?
Sure, thank you. Education is a relationship business, and that is the primary objective and the challenge of the current place we find ourselves in, a virtual situation with teachers reaching out and trying to build relationships with students across the internet. We have a lot of families that have no computer sense, and I'm ending that in a positive way. They've just never used computers. We are in the process of distributing 42,000 more devices and another 15,000 internet hotspots to enable students to connect with their teachers and establish, reestablish that relationship and to learn. We all know that the challenges for those who are in our lower-income strata and typically the family is the, the parents are going to be working out of the home. There may be less structure in the home to support education, to support learning. And we know that that's a challenge so long as we're out of the school building. But that is the place where the redoubling of the effort has to be in terms of building relationships between teachers and students, making sure they have the tools they need to participate fully in the educational opportunity that's being provided in their native language in all likelihood in order to build that relationship. And that's, that's a challenge. Most of our school teachers don't teach speech Spanish or Arabic. So it's building the relationship, fully engaging the young people in the remote opportunity to participate in the, in schools and the accountability that goes along with that to, I'm sorry, the accountability that goes along with that to make sure that students are making appropriate academic progress.
Thank you very much, Bill. Karen?
Yes, I guess I would start back with, I am concerned about some of the students that they were already behind and then March came. And we have many or several that, you know, really disconnected. And we are now at a point where we're starting back and the devices are rolling out. However, the latest that was released to the public was 15,000 families had been notified, it didn't say if they'd picked them up yet, but been notified of when they could pick them up, the devices. And there were over 46,000 that had been requested. And today is day one of week two of school. And that is a concern for me as an educator and also as a parent and just community member because I know it's a monumental task. However, I also know on my end that there are assignments rolling out, and I'm concerned about those that have, don't have the ability to reconnect yet and going back and assessing any gaps that exist from the time that they lost in the spring semester and the, what we can do for that and build from there. And also for the English language learners, you know, the talking points, there's been a little delay in that, and that was supposed to be rolling out, I believe, district-wide. That's a great tool for educators and families who speak different languages. And so I'd like to see that really become a priority to get that fully rolled out. And for special ed, I have to really touch on that because I am quite concerned. Many of our special ed students did not receive services when there was, you know, the COVID hit and, you know, I know it was, it is a pandemic. But as we're moving forward, they are, you know, having to do addendums for services that they may or may not be able to receive, such as, you know, it's hard for occupational therapy, physical therapy, and some speech therapy. And I just have, I guess, a wide range of how, you know, we need to be addressing all these and looking and thinking outside of the box in ways that we could possibly meet the needs of our diverse population across Wake County.
Thank you. All right, next question. School systems across the state and country are struggling to develop educational plans in response to the ever-changing nature of the pandemic. Do you expect that the post-pandemic school system to be less dependent on physical structures and still be able to serve students well? Bill, you may go first.
I think we'll see a different form of public education as we move forward. The introduction in Wake County of one device to one student, which had not happened prior to the pandemic and is about to be completed in the next 10 days or so, especially to be completed this week, the, that is going to change a lot. It's not going to fully replace in-person instruction. There's, there's a tremendous advantage for teachers to be in close proximity to their students in terms of coaching them and both academically and socially, in terms of identifying needs that the student may have that aren't apparent when they're turning in an assignment, some social issues, some trauma in their lives that needs to be addressed by additional school support staff. Those things have to happen, and it is the face, it is the in-person relationships that will be the foundation for the innovation that happens because of technology. I see there are opportunities for replacing the bubble sheet and the high-end, high-stakes testing that happens at the end of course and end of grade with a better opportunity for students to demonstrate mastery of what they were supposed to have learned in the curriculum. And that is a, that would be a learning curve for students, teachers, and for parents in terms of what replaces the test that actually gives a better, a better result of what the students have learned and teachers have taught. So I see there are going to be changes, but the gathering together in the school building is still going to be a fundamental part of schools as we move forward.
Thank you. Karen?
Yes, I agree with Bill on several things there. The in-person part is irreplaceable for many of our students. And the coming into the building is one of the most consistent and safest places some of our children have for the day. And I think it will look differently, you know, with the PPE, with the safety procedures and protocols that will have to be put into place. And I think there are ways that, you know, we're working on getting that put into place and getting everyone more comfortable with that. And I think that will help with, once we do return to in-person, it will look differently. But I think that is essential. And the online part is a struggle for many families and many students who, you know, watching a video to learn a task or learn a skill is very difficult for them to process and then to carry that out. And so it makes it difficult to measure if they're, what they're learning because for them, the virtual is not the best environment and really causes a lot of barriers to learning. And I think that's the biggest issue. It's not only how to measure how these students are learning, but how do we get them back to being engaged and able to learn in ways that meet their personal needs and follow IEPs and FIBO fours as well.
Thank you, Daniel.
Well, I do think that the board has really missed the boat on the plan. So COVID has been around since at least, at least March. So the board has had six months to plan for this virtual learning. And I will say that the whole virtual academy giving families the options to be virtual only, that was a must, that must happen. But the fact that, you know, Karen mentioned, we're in the first or even second week of school, and some children don't have laptops to participate, some kids don't have Wi-Fi card, Wi-fis to participate. We quite literally had six months to plan for this, and I get school ends, but, I mean, we shouldn't have been ordering these laptops, these Wi-Fi cards in May, not in July. And I get putting 42 bells and laptops in the hand of a lot of people is very difficult. I set up laptops, use laptops for people a lot, line of work. So I recognize the difficulty of that. But again, we've had six months to plan for this. And I love my principal, she's doing a great job, but I feel like we get a call almost every other day. I feel like almost every other day, something has changed. So I'm not criticizing the plan, but a plan has to say, this is what we're going to do. And a plan has to prepare for, if kids get sick, what are we going to do? And I'm not really sure that our, our virtual learning plan is six months worth of work in this one. But coming to some positives, I have to admit that my 13-year-old and my 11-year-old are a lot more computer and technology literate than I would expect at their age. And I'll take 50% of that blame reward. So I do think that kids coming out of this will be a little bit more technical savvy. I think that my kids are ready after, you know, the spring in two weeks, they're probably more savvy with Zoom, Teams, and meets and group in the classroom than some of my co-er. But so, you know, there are some advantages from that. And I think that we will be able to better give virtual options. But I would agree with both Bill and Karen that it's got to be in-person as much as possible. And I do think that some other schools are successfully going back to school in-person. And of course, time will tell what that does for spreading the disease. I'm sure it will help spread it. But I think we need a better plan, and I think that virtual learning is going to be part of our plan into the near future and probably over the next two, three years. I do agree as well with Karen that teaching kindergarteners to read virtually seems a lot more difficult to me than teaching high schoolers to do virtual learning.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to the next question. Racial inequity and the often resulting school-to-prison pipeline has been a longstanding problem in our schools, and there have been many strategies used to address it. The presence of law enforcement in the schools has become a recent flashpoint, at least pre-pandemic. Do you think it's time to reevaluate the use of school resource officers in the public schools? Do you have any recommendations? Karen, you may go first.
Okay. Well, I believe they play an integral role if they are using several things that I think are important, which is de-escalation techniques and also relationship building. I have seen SROs work just wonderfully and build relationships with some of our students who really struggle. And that has been the relationship that has motivated them to show up and do well at school. And I, so I do think they have a role and could be a positive role model in our schools. And I know there are also safety concerns, especially in certain schools that exist with physical issues that might be happening or also there are also restraining orders for some families and custody issues that can be, that can be, come quickly in emergency and having to wait for someone to come on campus to address that may be too late. So I do think they play an important role, but we have to make sure that they, again, the impositive role models are focusing on de-escalation. And I'm a big proponent of less physical intervention, especially with the training with the CPI that a lot of us in special ed have. I feel strongly that that is very important. And I also think that if there is any question about anything happening that is crossing a line with an SRO, it has to be immediately addressed. And if it's training, if it's, you know, they're sitting out, if it's, they're not welcome back in the school, it is whatever is appropriate to that situation, but we must act swiftly. But I do agree with keeping them in.
Thank you. Daniel, you're next.
I think whenever possible, decisions need to be made at the school level and not the district level. I think that's one problem with Wake County Public Schools is the district rule says this. The district rule doesn't make sense for all schools. We need to let schools have a little bit more say in what they do. I think school resource officers is a great example of that. I'm sure there's lots of schools with staff and the principal administration more comfortable with the school resource officer on site. And in said that, I don't know that every school in Wake County needs that school resource officer. So I know I won't necessarily be able to pass this, but I would advocate to the board that school resource officers be an option of the school. So if a middle school here doesn't want a school resource officer and the staff, administration, and the principal agree, I think that school should get those dollars to do other things. Maybe hire a social worker, maybe get an assistant principal to help discipline issues. But if a school over here wants a school resource officer, I don't think the board or the public should tell that school, you can't or shouldn't have a school resource officer. And I do want to compliment the school board on the MOUs. So the school board, not in the beginning, but now has MOUs that help the school resource officers understand when to intervene and when to not intervene. But I think in summary, kids need to come out of Wake, Wake County Public Schools with a degree, not a criminal record.
Thank you. Bill?
This is a practice that I've learned during the board meetings.
Okay.
Online, and I'm sorry, I apologize. The, the board is currently in review of our relationship with, with school resource officers. And let me share that, that a school resource officer in Wake County is not necessarily the same thing as a school resource offer and officer in Chicago or Nashville or another city. Because we have been working very hard with, with our memorandum of understanding, with the special training program for SROs, and a good, clear communication with the chiefs of the various departments and the sheriff, as well as building a very clear delineation of responsibilities where, where policing stops when the SRO comes into the building and where administration is, is responsible, and then where policing should begin, should there be an altercation or a fight, something that the police officer can assist with. In most of our schools, the police officers are very much involved in building relationships with young, particularly young people who don't necessarily want to build relationships with adults, and they do that very well. One of our high schools has a, a program where each student has three adults they can go share short concerns with, and the SRO is one of those three adults for many of the students in that particular school. The police chief of Cary told me that in terms of allocating personnel, 2,000 young people in a location constitutes a police beat. So from a community policing standpoint, it makes sense. And I guess to balance the whole equation, we need to remember that two years ago, there was a hue and cry from some people that we needed to start arming teachers. Well, none of us, I don't know, I don't, and our board does not support arming teachers. So there's a, there's a, there's a balance in here. And the board is going to go through a process this year of looking at incidents in our schools where SROs were involved and, and looking at the data and what does it tell us about the effectiveness of our SRO program in Wake County? And then the board will make a decision about whether to extend the SRO program or to mod- or to modify it in some way. And so that's a process that will be going on for the next nine months or so.
All right, thank you very much. Next question. Parents in Wake County have many options for educating their children. Should the Wake County Public School System and the leadership of the school board choose to coexist with these options? Or should they focus on creating a public school system that is equally attractive and serves all students and all families in Wake County? Bill, you may go first.
Our our objective is to serve every child that lives in Wake County. And we strive hard to provide a variety of programs and services that parents will choose to do. There are some constraints the legislature puts on the public school system that charter schools, private schools, parochial schools do not have. And that's something that the board would complain about on a regular basis, that charter school has control of their calendar, for example. The public school system does not. So we are, we want to be the best choice for every family in Wake County. And we're working hard to do that with quality academic programs, meeting the social and emotional and special educational needs of our students. And I I I'm happy to know where we are. And we continue to try to improve that and provide new programs for people. Most recently, expanding the Mandarin Chinese pro options for immersion and and things like that. So I I think we're doing well. We can always do better.
All right, thank you. Karen.
Um, yes, I think that we should be looking at why families leave Wake County. And I think instead of, you know, looking to be negative for the other schools, the best way to try to keep the families is to really have a sincere approach to actually speak with them and seek out what it was that caused them to leave or caused them to not ever come and choose a whole different route altogether. I don't know if we could reach out to them or not that way if they never came in. But now that I said that, but I think the biggest thing is to get feedback and not only get it, but see if there's common threats and things that we can do to change. Because I have heard from several families that there are common threats. There's, you know, feeling like the families aren't heard, feeling like getting tired of reassignment, not being able to feel like they can trust that if they buy a home, they can stay at their school. Curriculum issues, big curriculum issues. And so and also some special education families not feeling like their kids are being served. So I think that that is the biggest way that we can support the system and help advocate for it and encourage it to grow and be a positive system for more members of our community.
Thank you, Daniel.
I'd like to specifically talk about charter schools. I actually have in front of me two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen report from the Department of Public Instruction. And according to this report, seventeen percent of charter schools have less than five percent economically disadvantaged students. Fourteen percent of charter schools have less than ten percent economically disadvantaged students. And twenty five percent of charter schools have between ten and nineteen percent economically disadvantaged students. So basically, the charter schools have fifty six percent of charter schools have less than twenty percent of the economically disadvantaged kids. Compared to, again, under twenty percent economically disadvantaged kids, public schools have six percent. So and again, this is actually statewide, not countywide. But so if we look at public schools, twenty seven percent of public schools have between thirty and seven percent free and reduced lunch. What I'm trying, my point is, we're not in a fair fight. We're not treating everything equal. Are charter schools gonna get better end of year tests, better test scores on GreatSchool.com? Of course they are, because they're cherry picking just the very wealthy economically advantaged students. So I think this school board has fallen asleep when it comes to charter schools. I think we need to be very proactive in getting charter schools to make and take more free and reduced lunch. If a charter school comes in and they provide transportation and they have a cafeteria and appropriate facilities and they take thirty two percent free and reduced lunch kids or socially economic kids, so be it. Let's do that. On this Department of Public Construction thing that I'm looking at, ironically, two percent of charter schools take between ninety and ninety nine percent free and reduced lunch kids. I think that's a very interesting statistic. I'm very interested in figuring out how Lee Lake County Public Schools can get charter to get charter schools to take their fair share of the disadvantaged children.
Thank you very much. All right, we're gonna move on to the last question. Do you support ongoing efforts to adjust the curriculum to reflect concurrent concerns facing our community? Recently, there's been the additional of a financial literacy component within the high school social studies program. Other groups would like to see the addition of a civics government or content on systemic racism introduced into the coursework. How should the school board address these concerns? Daniel, you may go first.
I wanna start with personal finance. I absolutely positively support high schoolers taking some basic personal finance. I think that we need to be able to understand the amortization table. Most Americans will at some point in time get a mortgage. You need to understand what an APR is. I absolutely support children that graduate from high school knowing what tax brackets are. I'm shocked at the parents that think their marginal tax rate is what they pay on all their tax dollars. I think that a high school needs to be able to come out of high school knowing how to activate their effective tax rates. I think that high schoolers need to know and understand what stepped up basis is. I think that high schoolers, when they graduate, need to understand how a flat tax means the poor pay more and the rich pay a lower percentage. Why do our kids need to know that? Because they need to be educated voters and need to make sure that they don't vote against their own self-interests. And every time I go in to buy a car, it amuses me. And the car salesman always says, well, what do you wanna pay a month? And my confusing answer is, what does that have anything to do with our conversation? I wanna know what I'm paying for the car. But when you're dealing with used car salesman or a car salesman trying to get me to be happy with the monthly payment, it makes you understand that the vast majority of Americans don't understand their own personal finances. So yes, I very much support teaching personal finance and requiring personal finance to graduate. As far as the history lessons go, I'm not really an advocate of rewriting history. I've been to Le Havre, France, and I've seen that the French version of World War Two is that the Americans got bombed at Pearl Harbor and then the French throughout the Nazis by themselves. But this is a little bit of a conspiracy theory. But at some point in time, are we gonna teach our children that bombing the Japanese, using atomic bomb on the Japanese in World War Two was a bad thing that we created a radiation problem? The people in nineteen forty five didn't have any understanding that there was gonna be radiation problems for the next twenty years. So I think we need to be very careful not rewriting history.
All right, thank you. Bill? Nope, 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 nope. Very good. We've got a positive learning curve here.
Yep, 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 absolutely. The the challenge with adding anything to the curriculum is what will you remove in order to make room for it? You can only get so much stuffed into the high school bag. If if students need twenty four, twenty eight credits for graduation and you're gonna require them to have particular coursework, then what will that be? I I believe civics is very important. Personal finance is very important. How how can these things be incorporated into the curriculum? And what choices have to be made in order to make room for them to be taught and learned? More more complicated is the dealing with the challenges that we face socially at the moment with the racial unrest, the discord, if you will. I think the the there's more opportunity for us to build bridges and to talk with each other openly about why there, why people of color feel disenfranchised and about what they would believe, what what they believe could be done to change that factor. And we're not having that conversation at the moment, and those are not easy conversations to have. And at what grade level do we have those conversations? Certainly, teachers and students can have those conversations at any grade level. Because if a student comes in the class and doesn't wanna participate because he thinks the teacher has had some racial slant, then that has to be resolved. Otherwise, the student's not gonna participate in class. And that is incumbent upon the teacher to recognize there's a challenge and to open that conversation. So all of these things are important. The challenge is, when you look at the total high school curriculum and what we expect our students to know and be able to do, what are the wise choices to make so they're prepared for success and and a changing future?
Thank you. Karen?
Yes, well, the first thing that comes to my mind is making sure that we are fully transparent with any curriculum or materials that are being going to be used or possibly be used in a classroom. I also think we need to look at the outcome that we're that we're going for with any curriculum changes. And we address those honestly. I support personal finance as well. I also support to be having an honest history class. And I support also that we are not missing out on the fundamentals. There are many students that are passed along and are not or held back repeatedly that are not meeting benchmarks, that are not reading anywhere near a grade level, have comprehension issues, have basic math skills that, you know, we really need to help them with. So I think it's very important not to forget the big picture here because there are groups that I think that is a huge concern of mine that are being left out of a lot of conversations or said, we'll try. And then, you know, we go back and we look at how they're doing, and it's not changed too much. So I think we really need to focus on some of our math, our science, definitely our reading, and look at really what's happening there. There've been some changes in those in the recent years. But again, I am a big proponent of being fully transparent with all curriculums. And I do feel like that we all, all staff, need to be addressing how we treat students and any preconceived notions we may have. And I think it crosses a lot of different lines. I think there's assumptions, you know, I've heard, you know, even just across the county. And it's not only just racial issues, there's other issues as well. So we really need to spend some time addressing that and ensuring that all staff are really advocating for every one of our students and have a positive outlook and feel that they can all do well.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you to the candidates for coming today to participate in our virtual candidate forum. We recognize that running and serving an elected office is a considerable commitment of time, energy, and often sacrificed opportunities. The League, along with the residents of Wake County, is grateful that we have so many capable fellow citizens who are willing to step forward and serve the important duties as a member of the Wake County Board of Education. We will now move to closing statements where you have two minutes. Bill, you may go first. Please unmute.
Thank you very much. Again, appreciation to the League for sponsoring this forum. There is a lot of work for us to do. I have significant institutional knowledge about how our system works, about the challenges of making big changes and engaging the community. And how do we make, how do we move the whole school district forward and have it be something that the community continues to embrace after one or two or three or four board members might retire? That that's a challenge, and we have a big school district and we do a great job serving our families. I believe that we have a challenge ahead of us to see what, how do we finish managing this COVID situation? What is the earliest opportunity we can bring students back into the building? We wanted to bring special programs and pre kindergarteners into the building September eighth. And the combination of the three factors, teachers willing to teach, parents willing to bring their kids, and appropriate personal protective equipment were the three things that needed to happen simultaneously. And they have not yet. So that has been postponed. But several of us are very interested in getting our youngest children into the building as soon as we can. K one, two, that so we can begin quality instruction, face to face instruction, which we all believe, particularly for these young children, is much more effective than simply online instruction. So that would be an early, an early issue. The what happens after that in terms of how the virtual experience informs the ongoing in classroom instruction is gonna be very important. And I just wanna say this about one thing, the the school board has one employee. That's our superintendent. Usually, a superintendent retires when they leave us. And right now, we were able to, after Jim Merrill retired, we were able to find an absolutely fantastic superintendent, Kathy Moore, who had spent most of her educational life in Wake County in different roles. She's the first female superintendent in Wake County. She's a Latina by heritage, and she's doing a fantastic job in a in a situation that no one has ever experienced before. So I wanna give a shout out to her, to our teachers that are showing up every day now to work with children, and to our parents that continue to support us. I ask you to vote for me. Absentee ballots go out September four. Early voting starts October eighteenth.
Fifteenth.
And October fifteenth. Thank you. And whether you come to the poll in person or use an absentee ballot, please vote for someone. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, you're next.
I am next. Thank you. I'd like to go next. So I again wanna thank you, the women voters, for hosting this. I personally think the Wake County School Board is significantly more important than the presidential election and that it's gonna impact our children and it's gonna impact our community. Thank you for being willing to give us a forum here. I do also wanna give a shout out to Tim Simmons of Wake County Public Schools. He's the communications director. He's been very helpful and very forthcoming with information to me and I'm sure other candidates that are trying to get up to speed. Referencing Bill's comment earlier about high school curriculum being very packed, I have a great suggestion. I think that we should teach foreign language in elementary school and free up that time in high school for personal finance. But I I do have in closing a request. I'd like for everyone who's listening today, who's trying to decide who to vote for, I'd like for those voters to go to all three of our websites. And I'd like for you to look at the platforms. We haven't covered everything here today. There's a lot of important issues that we've missed. So I encourage you to go to my website, danforschools.com. At the bottom of my platform link, or excuse me, at the bottom of my platform page, I have links to both Bill and Karen's websites, so you can go visit everyone. And I think there's a lot for a lot of important issues that still need to be discussed after this. And one of those issues is for the voters that are gonna vote for Karen. Karen's a Wake County Public School employee. And by law, Wake County Public School employees cannot be on the school board. So I want to see if Karen is willing to tell her voters, the people that are considering voting for her today, if she's willing to step down from her Wake County Public School position to be on the school board situation.
All right, thank you very much. Karen, your closing statement, please.
Well, the first answer, Dan. Yes, I am willing. I knew that going into that, that was part of the process. I have a unique experience and skill set that I have to bring to this board. And I am planning to, when I went, to do resign. That will be what I have to do. So moving on, like I said, I bring a unique skill set because I have a different background than anyone else here. As a therapeutic foster care social worker, I had to work with multiple systems. I also have a great go of knowledge of social emotional issues. And I have done a lot of homework, not only as a staff member, but also as a parent. a lot of homework, not only as a staff member, but also as a parent. I have done numerous records requests. I believe Mr. Sum said I broke the record for 10 years, and that was last summer. And I am continuing to read through, and it's just unfortunate that you have to make records requests to find out a lot of truth about what's happened in our school system. And that is a big concern for me, because I feel like as a board, we should be working for the people and very free-flowing with information and be willing to share that. And, but I have put forth many hours doing the work, and I think that's important as a board member to be willing to do that and understand the multitude of issues and how they all work together and how one decision on one thing can roll over and affect the ability to do something else. And where the focus really needs to be put back on the students, every single student, and their education and providing that sound education and supports they need. Because right now, there are multiple cohorts where that is not happening, and I am very concerned about that. I am also concerned that every decision that is voted on by this board in the forefront of their minds should be in the best interest of every student. And that is something I have a history of being very consistent on doing, and I would be honored to be able to do that on this board. And I want to just thank all staff, not just teachers. There's IAs, there's data managers, custodians, bus drivers.
All right.
Everybody.
Thank you very much, Karen. That concludes our forum. Please be sure to go to vote411.org to learn more about the candidates on your ballot, especially the candidates at the bottom of the ballot, and to learn the latest information on polling place, hours, and location. Thank you again for joining us.